Waving at you over here.
It's raining out. It's raining out.
You're going?
It is. It's probably pouring in a few minutes.
That's why you brought your rain jacket, right?
Well, it doesn't get too windy.
Be careful, that's not metal, is it?
We'll send you a test.
Probably is.
Nice. Oh, oh, I get it. Not a surprise, though.
Yeah. Not local either.
What are you guys looking so solemn about? I love the fire squad. Six o'clock coming into order.
To the land of the United States of America, to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in just this court.
Action on minutes. Who can accept? Motion and a second. Any discussion or when I can see a copy of my [inaudible]. I'm assuming everybody else got it.
They're on the bottom.
Oh.
Data, they're on the bottom of the podcast.
For present discussion, all those in favor? Justice the agenda?
I have nothing serious.
Public comments. Just put your name and town that you're from.
Los, Oxford. I don't know what... I really don't know enough history about this to know when they end up. It seems that years ago, we had some sort of tree committee that planted trees all over the town. And I wondered just what department that was pitched to. Or is it, or was it? Do you remember anything about it?
I'll be honest with you, no. I gotta be honest with you, no.
Well, yeah.
What I remember, it was long before my time, but it was during the Elm Tree. Maybe Howie remembers that, even before Howie. But I always remember my husband saying that when the Elm Trees went away, the town planted all of the maples that are now like up and down King Street. And the town planted those.
Yes, they did.
But that was a lot. I mean, that was during my husband's...
Three, seventies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was long before I ever came here.
Well, if you're a town report, that's the reason why. Sorry. Because Gary, what's his name? Our fire chief, I never could remember his last name.
Sogar?
Yeah. He was big into that sort of thing. So he went through all those. And I remember it. Well, the whole point of the question was, we have so many trees that are coming down into the roads and taking down wires and so forth. I wondered if there's some sort of a program that could be set up to take them down and do whatever needs to be done with them. And that way, we wouldn't lose power as much.
The other thing I remember, when you were town manager, Howie and I worked for you. You had them over by the tennis court. Where did you get all of those little...
They were probably for green, and they were small trees. Mostly old, I think.
Do you remember where they came from?
Not up here, no.
It was, the town was given those by someone, I don't remember who. But it was with town, Howie was the manager.
Yeah, I remember.
And they must have been planted someplace.
Some at the beach and around downtown.
That just came to my mind just now. But so, it's been a couple of different things over the years.
I just wondered if it was something we ought to start thinking about. I don't find it, we're not doing what tomorrow. But we will lose a lot of trees.
Bring up this public comment. Business. Five point one, the Blue Ward demolition of RFP for 260 King Street.
Yeah, so 260 King Street, if the board recollects, that's the building that, or the home that was decided. The selectmen did an order that it was unsafe building, did a demolition order. The owner was given ninety days to demo the building. It has not happened. So a RFP was put out seeking bids to demo the building. You see, we received four bids. Walsh Excavation LLC for twenty thousand. Cross Excavation for thirty-two-five. Scott Construction for forty-eight thousand eight hundred. Environmental Restoration for fifteen thousand thirteen dollars. So I've included copies of all of those, all those bids in here for you. If you'd like to take a look at those. Looking for direction from the board on where you might want to go. I know Environmental Restoration is a larger company. They have locations nationwide. Walsh Excavation, which is the next lowest bidder, is based out of Paris. I believe Kingston, you said you had some experience with them as far as septic installs and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I very agree, yes.
Which one of these bidders will take care of everything that has to be taken care of? From taking it down, dealing with asbestos, hauling away and everything? Which is the best one? Whether they're the lowest, middle, or highest bidder? Which one has the bid that will cover everything that needs to be done?
So Environmental Restoration is for fifteen thousand thirteen dollars. They note right in their bid that if asbestos is found, that they'll do a, they'll want to do a change order to encompass that cost. The next one, the Walsh Excavation, doesn't make any mention of asbestos at all.
And Cross and Scott?
The only one that made mention of the asbestos was the environmental, the lower one.
That they, that they would have to stop and do a rebuild?
Right. So I'm assuming that, because they did their due diligence, I'm sure that they have included that in their costs that they're quoting us.
If there's asbestos in everything else.
I noticed on Walsh, the... Quite about to break down the building, but Cross saying that we have to pay for the disposal. But the other ones aren't saying that.
Yeah.
So...
So I spoke to the fire chief about the request to spray down the building. And, you know, we had a conversation about that. I mean, she doesn't see any problem doing that. Seems a little odd, given the size of the building and so forth. But if that's what they'd like to do, then she says she doesn't have a problem with that, so.
Say go across. It's my guess.
What's that?
I'd say go across, not Cross, Walsh. Wasn't the bid for demolition removal?
Yes.
So they're taking it down and they're taking it away.
Taking it down, taking it away.
And can you just confirm with them that that does include everything, including asbestos?
Walsh?
Yeah.
I can do that.
Well, it definitely looks like the other pictures got all kinds of qualifications. But I just couldn't shake a suspicion that might more be more than fifteen. Would it ask?
I'm just, I'm surprised that Cross put in... If it was supposed to be part of the bid, they put in that Oxford's going to pay the disposal. Well, they're not meaning good specs, if that's what the specs were.
I believe we are on the hook for... Sorry, I should have had that at the tip of my tongue here. We're on the hook for some of the...
Do we know if there's any asbestos in it, asbestos in it?
Do you want to answer that, Kingston?
So I was, I was actually seeing if the engineer had reported on that. And I also was trying to see if he got into the basement and see if there was any asbestos. From what I gathered from the exterior, it's clapboards. Normally, you're not seeing asbestos for clapboards. You're seeing lead possibly. And I also have pictures of the rear of the building, where some of the old siding was. And that didn't appear to be asbestos either. So unfortunately, we don't have confirmation that there's no.
There's no asbestos.
Exactly, exactly. So theoretically, the environmental people, the company there, they could theoretically spring that on us if there was asbestos.
You said that you had some experience with Walsh. Did they do what they said they'd do last time?
Yep, yep, they had installed the septic. I think it was out on Allen Hill Road, if I remember right. And they had, they did a good job. They were very forthcoming. They let me know ahead of time when they were ready for inspection. I was like, I gotta get two of them for a septic. And everything was in order, full time.
I'll second that motion, though.
Motion and second, the discussion. All those in favor?
Walsh?
Walsh.
With confirmation of the asbestos, I assume?
Sure. They're paying us twenty thousand dollars to do the job.
Okay. Turn on.
Five point two, reappointment of James Goforth to the appeals board. So, motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Vote. Five point three, renewal legal license application for Oxford claims to be banned. Come on.
Start again.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Vote. Five point four, public safety building repair discussion.
All right, so there's two items that have come up over the public safety building. One is the HVAC air conditioning. As you can see, for whatever reason, it decided not to work on the fire department side, except for in the conference room training area. We reached out to Nason Mechanical, because they're the ones that we generally use for all of our repairs and such over there. They're giving us a quote of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars to fix the issue. And includes a replacement of the air handler, the condenser, and the compressor for the fire department side. It's pretty miserable over there on the fire department side. So I don't really feel like this is something that we can go without. I'm recommending that we turn to the fund balance policy account to make that emergency repair. Glad to answer more questions or discuss.
One more?
It is.
This is only the office areas and the... It's not the bays, right? The bays aren't air-conditioned, are they?
The bays, yeah, not.
So...
Offices, bedrooms, you know, bathrooms, locker rooms. A lot of the lobby works, but the little dispatch area. The only place that works is the training room and then my office, because for some reason, it's attached more to the...
Although looking at some heat pumps. Write your mind.
That's what I was gonna say. And you can get heat pumps through Efficiency Maine's incentive program.
At least get somebody to come in and look and see if it's feasible. I know it's a lot of small rooms. But it doesn't, it's, do you know square footage? Scott or not counting the bays, not counting. So PD's working?
It is. How many rooms do you talk to there?
Well, you don't need to, you don't need to pump in every room. But depending on if the doors are open or closed, what's open and closed, where you need the heads.
And it's tricky, too, because the hallways. You know what I mean? There's so many hallways on something that I need... I think heat pumps in my house, I think they're great. I just don't know how it's gonna do... I feel like you're gonna need a lot of heads because there's so many rooms, all the hallways. So, you know, like the lockers, the bathrooms, and like in Tony's office, none of them have exterior walls. So...
I mean, I'm not against Lee's looking into the idea. But I got three of them in my house. And you go by too many of them, next thing you know, you're right up to where you're supposed to be. That building's set up for this, that's all.
Two, my, two heat pumps for my house with less than ten thousand dollars.
Recently or a period ago?
Well, it wasn't too many years ago. I had two summers now, so.
I don't know, we'll look into it.
I think we should at least look into it.
Not to put Scott or Ricky on the spot here, but didn't, didn't we look at heat pumps or something over there at some point? Was that when Paul was here, or?
We looked at a couple different options. I remember that it was talked about, but I don't know where it went from there.
I want to say Paul talked with Nasons about it, and they would not recommend it, but I don't know that. It just goes back to the problem that this has been brought up, that that system has been failing for the past three budgets that I know about. And along with the septic system. I think that's something that we need to look at, pay more, closer attention to, that when issues are brought up, that we act on them, maybe give a look faster. Could save ourselves some money in the long run.
There are several partners with Efficiency Maine who will work the heat pumps. They'll come and they will do an assessment of the area that you want the heat pump for. They'll give you the, they'll tell you exactly what you need, what it will cost, and what the rebate incentive will be given back to the town from Efficiency Maine. So there would, there's a potential there for savings of the total cost. And that, that depends on how the bid is and what is qualified for. But they'll tell you exactly what you need. And if you look on the Efficiency Maine website, it shows who the partners. As an example, Everett and West Harris, they are a partner with Efficiency Maine. They'll do those, but there are other companies.
Those are pretty local. Eco?
Yeah.
Is it Eco? Eco, Eco?
Yeah, Eco and where?
Field Electric is another one. But there are several.
I think you'd have to have more than two heads. I think you'd have to have more than two heads. But I don't know that you'd have to have more than two of the bigger units outside.
Usually, you can have one compressor outside. And two or three units, they can be different size. But they have to do the same job. Or they have all three on cooling cycle, or all three on heating side. So you can have more heads, like on each compressor. But they have to be programmed like to do the same job.
I know I just got some hints. So that's why I'm saying that.
It's worth checking it out.
Yeah.
You don't know, you check it out?
All right.
Worth, worth it if we did.
All right, I will get back to you. The next meeting of that issue.
I think that question.
On my side.
You just answered it. I'm saying we would have to wait till next meeting before we could do anything, right?
Yes. Let's get, let's get the information together and then...
I think you can get probably Everett and or Eco who may out relatively quickly to scope it out. Tell you, yes, it's feasible for twenty grand or no, it's not.
Okay. We'll work on it. All right, septic system, sewer, sewer and septic. So as you can see by the notes, the leach field started to malfunction and back up. It caused a big hole in the pavement that washed, kind of eroded underneath the pavement. So I've been working with Zenia, the sewer department. And we've been working with Jim at the fire department. So we fixed the hole at the end of the building. The tanks were pumped out. And so now, we're looking into hooking it up to the town's sewer system. Still getting costs together. The couple of costs that I've been able to get together with Zenia is it looks like now to bore under the building to... So rather than go all the way around, it would be about six thousand dollars. And then sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for the pump grinder that would be required. And we're still waiting on a cost, I believe, for the pump station, right?
No.
Oh, you've got that?
Oh, yeah, I sent it to you, too.
Oh, I didn't see the pump station.
Okay, so it's sixteen eight hundred.
Oh, so that is, the sixteen eight hundred is not the grinder, that is the pump station?
It's pump station, yeah. It will be coming on two or three pieces. It's five by seven feet.
Yep.
And it will be installed by the place, by American Concrete. And then they will be boring holes, depends where we will need that for the inwards.
I misunderstood, JZ, sorry.
So what's the total cost?
So right now, we're looking at, what would be, thirty, twenty-two eight ninety. And that excludes, that excludes the electrical cost.
Yes.
Yeah.
There is little issue. It's a duplex station, which needs duplex panel. Right now, they're like three weeks behind.
Three weeks behind?
Three weeks behind.
Three weeks behind.
So I asked Electrician to install a simplex panel, which will operate on the one pump, till panels will come. So at least, like, we can go ahead, like, and do the job. And then just go replace the panel.
So as Sharon and I were discussing a little bit ago, I had suggested, you know, looking at potentially the wastewater treatment facility reserve account as a potential funding source. We also discussed the going to the fund balance as a source of funding for this. I know it's a lot of money, but it's, again, the septic system failing. We need to correct the issue and get up to the sewer. I like Zenia's idea of if we can bore under the building so we don't have to disrupt the pavement all the, all the way around and make a big mess there. But at the same time, I don't, I don't have all the final costs because we're still waiting on a couple incidentals, so.
Who's gonna do the work?
As far as the boring, what was the name of that company again?
Yeah, it's a pro liar.
But what about the excavation?
Oh.
Public Works.
And Jim's been very open to all that stuff, so he was very helpful the other day.
Well, the problem ain't gonna go away. We live in town, and we got the town source, shouldn't we come through it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, sure. I mean, I don't...
So I think we're moving on.
I think it should. I, the only thing, I don't think that we should take the money from the wastewater treatment plant's reserve account. Because this is a problem that the town has with one of its buildings. And it shouldn't come out of Zenia's sewer account. It should come out, in my opinion, of the fund balance account, which covers townwide banks. So that's the only thing I would recommend.
What did you say was in the public safety building?
Public safety building account?
Yep.
Let me double check that, I don't have that right in front of me. Because it was getting pretty low, but I've got it. Public safety buildings has got twelve thousand five hundred in it.
All of it up for mental?
I would say yes, because this is a problem that probably has been going on now, from what I understand, for a while now. Yeah, it's a town. It's not an individual department at this point. And there is not that much in that account if something else happens over there.
I'll give about two, three, two, three. Motion?
Make a motion.
Start again.
Discussion. All those in favor? Oppose? Hold on. Page? Five five, abatement. Michael Sagal, John Hall, account nine forty-two, for four hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents. Assessing agent recommends... She goes... Does she want to weigh in, or only if we had questions? I mean, I've got paperwork, so if I have any questions. Keep wanting to weigh in.
That's, I mean, if you guys have questions, that's why I have her here, so she can weigh in. I apologize, but she's, she is recommending on this one the abatement amount of four hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents.
So...
Can I get it?
Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Vote. Five point six, abatement forty-two, TLE LLC, Robinson Marine, account nine oh nine, four thousand six hundred six dollars and eighty cents. Assessing agent recommends approval. Questions? Or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion and second, discussion. All those in favor? Vote. Five point seven, abatement Frederick, Frederick Brooks, account four eighty-six. Assessing agent recommends denial on this abatement. So move.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. All those in favor of denial? So vote. Turn around. Five point eight, abatement forty-four, eighty-eight, Maple Road Holdings LLC, account six seventy-two, one thousand one hundred and eight, two dollars and seventy-two cents. Assessing agent recommends approval.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Start again.
Motion and second, any discussion? Appreciate all the pictures, like, we don't know what that building is. All those in favor? So vote. So vote. Five point nine, abatement forty-five, Beverly Haynes, Trustee Beverly Haynes, Loving Trust, account one eight two two, for five hundred seventy-six dollars and forty cents. Assessing agent recommends approval. Simple. Second. Motion, second and discussion. All those in favor? Vote. Five point ten, reviewing July selectance meeting schedule upcoming, abatements, special board of assessors and agents.
Alright, I just wanna throw out there that at the last selectance meeting, we talked about July fourth is a holiday. We discussed moving the meeting potentially to the eleventh if needed. And then July eighteenth is just a regular scheduled meeting. So one of the things I wanted to throw out there is we have some abatements coming down the pike, pretty heavy amount to finish them up. I didn't know if the board would be interested in, in getting through some of those on the eleventh and just keeping it an assessors meeting, you know, assessors board meeting? And focus on that and then do some more on the eighteenth. Is that something the board would entertain or?
Think it's probably a pretty good idea.
And then when we finish on the eighteenth, we can evaluate how many more we need to go, kinda thing.
Oh. How many do we think you're gonna have for the eleventh?
You can have.
I mean, I don't have a meeting from, yeah, all of four or five, but.
I think she's probably got, what, twenty-two or twenty-five almost ready.
Right now, I think I have twenty-four total abatements.
So you're gonna have more than twenty if we have a meeting on the eleventh.
Yeah.
And you said you would have set it at five?
That was just a suggestion.
Yep. We're good? Eleven.
So the eleventh at five P M?
And it's all abatements unless something urgent comes up, I guess.
I think that makes sense.
Well, you can bring it back to us at that time to the people.
Okay.
If you get it, great. I'll put it in.
Okay.
Five eleven, would you approve Oscar American Legion fundraiser toll booth, toll road request?
Uh, yep, so the Legion is requesting on July sixth from nine to one Skeet Hill Road, just like we've done last, last year. And rain date of the thirteenth, nine to one. And police chief, you know, they've had a discussion about it, I don't think there's any issues. Everything went smooth last year, right?
Yep.
So.
Second. Motion, second, further discussion. All over the page. Vote.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Howard. Thanks for coming.
My pleasure.
Six point eight, department four, police and fire chief.
So let's give a quick intro if that's alright. Just, there's some concern that's been voiced by the police chief and the fire chief regarding the mass gathering permit that was issued to the Oxford Plain Speedway for their events on the July second, third. Concern that the crowd's gonna be larger than anticipated, concerns about camping onsite and EMS coverage. So if it's alright, can we maybe hear from the department heads and let them kind of go over their concerns and then we obviously have something from the Speedway and maybe speak to the chief about.
Totally, we met the other day with, talked about this, cause of the things that we've been seeing online and what we've been hearing from within the track and some racers and things like that, that this was gonna be huge, you may be going above and beyond with the forty-nine ninety-nine permits and all that. Of course, my concern is trying to schedule for that, trying to be fair to the track or make sure we have enough coverage to deal with what we have to deal with. And it's still kind of, I'm uncertain of how this is going to go. Um, one of the things, a couple of things brought some of the eyes for this is they got popular drivers coming, popular announcer coming and things like that, so. For us, it's been an unsure thing. With the talks with Michael, he, he feels pretty positive we will follow under that forty-nine ninety-nine. But again, it's just planning and trying to, trying to treat the track fairly, but also remember it's July second and third and I'm trying to plan and making sure if I haven't, if I need enough, also like I have it. So the planning's been really difficult for this.
Fire chief says something.
Concerns too for coverage, but it, it all depends on the amount of people that's gonna be there. So Michael did give us some insight when we met the other day of what he felt was gonna be there and.
What?
So.
What's the average, attendance or two fifty?
Between six and eight, wouldn't you agree, Michael?
Yeah, I've done one of those, I'm saying, it's probably a twenty, probably bad.
Do you know how many tickets you sold last year?
It was about, yeah.
So. I don't know, the repercussions of, if you get a permit from a thousand to five thousand people, um, you all of a sudden have six or seven thousand people there. Potential for problems are there. Now, how do you limit it past the five thousand people? There's something one way that I know, and that's sell no more than five thousand tickets. That's not a good business decision if you got people that wanna come and make your tickets. So I, I don't know, I don't know the answers, I don't know what.
I would think it'd be, personally, I mean, you think we're gonna have, what are you, big name drivers coming up?
I mean, we got Kyle Bush coming, right? I mean, he's running this Friday and then he's running the management Sunday.
Yeah.
And they come, so anybody that's a major fan, I mean, I, you're just gonna see him run before then anyway. I don't really see us getting more than, I mean, if I get twenty-five hundred to three thousand people in place, thousands of people in bed, that would be, that's kind of what I'm roughly expecting.
And that's just on Wednesday, Michael, right?
Yeah, I mean, Tuesday is just qualifying, which is another thing that's stupid, I see is like two fifty, for example, is always, you know, I mean, the thing that makes the two fifty so bad is it's a, you know, people planning a vacation around it, people have been coming to it for, you know, a lot of people have been coming to it since, sorry, you know, some people it's like have been coming for twenty years, it's a tradition and stuff there. They don't necessarily just think doing this is gonna just all of a sudden drop in, you know, a giant crowd, but as they talk to them, we can kind of just, I, I'm fine with whatever we want for coverage for it too. I'm just trying to plan somewhat with them and trying to keep it somewhat reasonable as well.
So when you say you're fine with whatever kind of coverage, are we talking about both police and EMS or?
Well, I mean, as far as EMS, I was planning on having the same coverage I've had for the two fifty for the last five years, which is town coverage alongside for Saturday night, well, what I've done for the two fifty is while we're racing Saturday night, I've had town coverage on and then I've had town coverage for Sunday from the start of racing, well, Sunday means you started the word, I think like ten A M, so a couple hours before racing. But then through the end of the race. And that's been primarily to cover, you know, the grandstand side of it, as we've done our whole E M T stuff for a little more years. And that's covered.
And chief, I don't, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I, the only, the best way I think to deal with this right now is, cause this is unknown to us, I mean, we have to agree on that. We haven't had this, is next week, I mean, I'm gonna keep checking with Michael all week long and see how things are progressing, if he's getting different numbers or, or what, so I can try to plan to have the people we need.
Do you do advanced sales?
Yeah.
So you must have some indication on a day-to-day basis.
I checked yesterday.
How many?
Like a hundred and fifty total pre-sales.
So.
So no, what we see in front of tape for the two fifty, this event is generally mentioned though too, but I still think a lot of people will try to order them ahead of time. I mean, I'm fine with, and it's like, I'm fine with having coverage of what, what we think we need. I don't know exactly what, you know, I mean, obviously it'd be great if we had a really good crowd. I assume that's gonna be within that lower mark mass gathering, you know, considering the two fifty just kind of creeps over like that. I mean, the two fifty is not something you just kind of decide you're gonna have the race and make it that big, that's that big because it's been built over, I mean, it's the only race in the country that was snowball derby in Florida, are the only two short track races in the country that draw like.
And I know some of the stuff that, that's caused attention is the payouts more in the two fifty.
Yeah.
And that was one thing, that people was like, oh my word, everybody's gonna be there. But. Chief?
Um, and then like we had talked to him this week, all of us together, the other thing to me that's more concerning than the two fifty is, is the length of camping. So they can start camping Saturday night during fireworks and then they can stay till the eighth, so a lot of people, as we know, have um, that July fourth week kind of off because it's holiday right in the middle. So I worry about obviously the people in the grandstands, but also how many campers and stuff like that will be expected, especially if they're staying all the way through, cause the cost is a hundred and twenty-five dollars for eight nights, which when can you get that on a holiday week if you take that week off, so that's obviously something I'd be worried.
And again, it's not that we don't want to see the business, I mean, I'd love to see the place packed, so you couldn't walk in there, right? That's not it, we're just trying to be prepared here.
And what coming, obviously, up on the event and it's a holiday, so obviously we have people on the mission too for scheduling for the eleventh hour for our people for scheduling.
So is any, sorry, Paul.
How many are there, which campers, have you, any registered yet for the campers?
No, I mean, I haven't done any registers, so I can first pretty, if, for that, I mean, I'm hoping, I'm expecting probably a hundred and fifty or so campers, two hundred max. I don't see it being any more than half of what the two fifty is. Just as a factor, I mean, yeah, like even, you know, even last fall, we hit a three hundred lot of races, the bigger fan race and all that, so I mean, I think I had like forty people camp. So I don't, I don't.
Doesn't sound like a huge draw to camp if there's no racing going on for eight days, so, I mean, you had two or three days, but.
Rick, how do you describe, compare the coverage that you have scheduled for this versus a two fifty, a lot less?
Yeah, a lot less right now.
Then maybe because you don't know and it's an unknown, then maybe it makes sense to plan more for coverage.
I have people on reserve, but of course, it's fourth of July week and a lot of people are playing, and that's been my fear too, is not being able to secure it when I need it. But I told the entire department that I'm a standby, cause they need you to do it. Just, just for, as a safe now.
Are you still able to draw from the other towns like you did when you had?
If I have to.
Yeah.
But of course, they're all shorthanded, yeah.
Does Speedway cover any cost with the patrols?
I would like four of them to cover, four of the events, during the events.
All of it?
Yes. Like during the two fifty, for example, at the end of the two fifty weekend, my call failed, it was a thirty thousand dollar.
Well, I know you used to, when I worked here, I know that they always covered it, but I didn't know it had changed. I would just say that whenever you can get to increase it, if it's unknown, you wanna at least be somewhere, somewhat prepared.
And we, we've always worked to try to keep this cost, you know, out.
Yeah.
At a minimum.
What's the minimum coverage for this size permit?
For this one right now, four guys.
Four, how long?
Well, four long period.
Two call hours is?
No, one, one, because the Tuesday is just a qualifying and he's really not expecting much of anything.
Yeah, I agree.
On that day. I mean, I'm gonna watch that to see if I need one or two guys for that, depending upon what they have, and I can fill that.
So it sounds to me you're gonna play it by ear.
Yeah.
Which I think would be good for the area.
Absolutely, yep, I agree.
Enough to be a naysayer, I guess the only thing that I just wanna say is that I feel like we've all communicated and that's great. I just, I really hope that we're all putting our cards on the table and we're all acting in good faith. So if you really are expecting a small crowd like that, I just, I just don't wanna see us show up and have nine thousand people and all of us have a real problem on our hands finding personnel and that kinda thing, I don't think you'd want that either, so.
No, I mean, I think there's, everyone can see, I mean, other than, you know, obviously the incident that took place on the Thursday night of two fifty weekend last year. Other than that, I think we've averaged one rest a year on the entire two fifty weekends for the last.
Last five, six years.
Yeah, I mean, I think at least that, I think seven or eight years, we've had it really down to minimal, you know, issues there. I mean, EMS issues related to even two fifty weekend. And then I think on average of, you know, you know, one person, like a dehydration thing or this or that, you know, something of that sort. I mean, when the town actually, I, I was actually the one who requested the E M T coverage for two fifty weekend, because for several years after I switched from town coverage, because we couldn't, it wasn't a feasible thing to staff at that time, so the answer that I got was, you know, I cover it with E M Ts at the track and I did that, I think, two or three years during the two fifty. I had one two fifty where we had a couple things in the stands going on and it was like trying to direct people to just give, just medical issues, like we have pregnant women that needed assistance as a factor. So that year after that, it wasn't even a town suggestion, I came and, I had a meeting with the police chief, the chief at that time, he says, look, I would like to at least get down coverage for this amount of time and this amount of time on this weekend. So, you know, because I, I think that's the most feasible way to have coverage that provides people, you know, with good care of, you know, getting in there and everything being on time. So I mean, I really feel like even with all these, I think, like with meeting with them, I, I'm very proactive to the side of obviously having security issues and obviously having medical issues at a facility would not be a good thing. So, I mean, that's always a top priority, that's why I talked to, um, police chief and fire chief. And I'm fine with it, I'm fine with having E M T coverage there with the towns during races, fine with having police coverage there, all that stuff. I, I mean, I just, I, I mean, I don't see this event turning into something like a two fifty from twenty-five years ago where we're arresting thirty kids from Lewiston that came in here fighting hard.
No, neither do I, Michael. I don't either.
So that's where, I, I mean, I really don't see us exceeding this mass gathering permit either, because other than two fifty, everything I've done since we've had the racetrack, which has gone on for about eleven, twelve years now, I've never once been over that threshold. I mean, even for bigger fan races, we've done bigger fan races in different parts of the country before. It's not over five, you know, have never hit five thousand, you know, person threshold, for example, fifteen years ago, whatever it was, we reopened North Wilkesboro Speedway for the first time in twenty years in North Carolina, we rented it from the, uh, town at that time there, paid a hundred thousand to win, had I think, three thousand people in the stands and a thousand people were sold to picks. Big money and that stuff, even with cool, with, you know, niche things, doesn't necessarily bring people to the short track racing, into the tracks.
And no, we, we checked with, oh, you checked?
Uh, yeah, we, that, Kyle Bush racing tonight, all right? And, yeah, it was like, yeah, it was like coming up and they, they did expect it to be five thousand.
If you put.
But they're a big, big fan.
Twenty-five hundred, no, this was at Woody Speedway.
Yeah, not a lot, you know.
And if you put, we rented that facility before, for all starts series and that, for that and stuff, and if you put twenty-five hundred people in that, Kyle should go through it.
How, how many people from that whole, Michael? They, yeah.
The grandstands, I guess, if people were sitting like on top of each other, it's probably an eighteen, big sheet exactly, you might, but. And you might have a, you know, and that would have to be between ten and around.
Do you know what they do in advance tickets up there?
I don't.
No. No, I don't.
People are all, but, no. But I mean, that's the other thing with this is that I see it being different than the 250 too is is the 250, which I will, as a part of, we do have fireworks night, I do have been a couple days and been racing. Again, but I also perceive this being much more of a, like, the 250 people are like, I get people from Vermont and Canada and all and something, quite a whole week, they come down, they spend, they're doing a crowd. I see this as being more of a people showing up in cars Wednesday night buying tickets, coming in, hopefully, you know. That's more what I see.
I just said, I have my ear. Can you just make sure that the town's covered?
Absolutely.
No action.
Oh, just wanted an opportunity for us to say it out loud and and get a response from the track and if the board's comfortable with what we're doing, then we'll keep on keeping on and if there's any issues, we'll address them in the future then.
And I'm sure we'll clear it with Paul next week.
You got a rain date planned? Does it go away if you break it out or?
Our rain date is basically what Paul, it hopefully doesn't happen. My plan on this event is, which would obviously kill the crowd hugely, but our plan on this event is if if we look at it like Sunday and say, or Saturday and say for some horrible reason, Tuesday, Wednesday, we're really awful. Our plan is to move the event forward, not back.
So that weekend before?
No, to Monday and Tuesday instead of Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yes, that before?
Yes, yes.
So did you blow it up in the morning?
Yes, but if I do that, I can really promise you we won't get, the way people have a plan and and moving around, like.
Would Bush still be there if you move it on?
There's probably a reason why. That and the holiday, yes.
Alan Mannish's report.
All right, I, they got a couple of things. Uh, one is the town meeting and referendum results. I I'm gonna get to that, I'd like to hit that last if I can, just a couple other quick things came up today. The first, I I've been contacted and was asked questions about an article that was in the Sun Journal recently or about MSAD seventeen and the town of Paris uh sending aside money to look into their budget practices. I don't know the whole story. I just wanted to say that I have seen the article, um and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. As the manager, I don't have any intentions of engaging those kind of discussions. I'm assuming the board feels the same way as far as consulting somebody to to look into the school's budget practices and so forth. I mean, obviously we monitor the budget practice, what they're budgeting and so forth, but um I don't know that we as a a town, and please correct me if I'm wrong, are interested in following the suits. Is that, do you agree at this time?
I have no interest in investigating the school districts' budget practices. They they're audited every year, just like municipalities and if they were doing something wrong, we we'd all know about it.
I agree with Dana. That's not our concern to do that or our responsibility to do that.
So I think if I'm asked about that moving forward, I, that's what I'm going to say, is that the town does not have any plans to do that and.
Well, you go there and I guess, you know, didn't that one investigation cover it or?
One would think. So the other thing is, this is actually good news, some progress. Um, I spent time on the phone today with the Army Corps of Engineers, our VHB, the engineer, this is all a reference to the Welchville Dam. So today we finally got our permit from the Army Corps of Engineers to proceed forward with this uh Welchville Dam and uh the project. So the next step is that, so we've got the permit, now it's going back to HUD. Um HUD is the federal agency, US final review of the project. HUD will then be the one that disburse the funds for the grant. I don't know how long that'll take, but that's where it's landed now. Um, so working with VHB, they're VHB is, they're recommending, so Pratt's the one that put a put a bid in, I think it was a little over a year ago on this project. And one thing that VHB wanted me to ask, I didn't have this on the agenda because it just literally came up just a little earlier. Pratt's the one that put in the bid. Pratt was the only one that put in a bid. And one of VHB's requests was would the town consider um honoring the bid that Pratt put in? Pratt has verified that they would stick to their original bid price, bid price, which I should have had there right in front of me, which was just over two hundred and two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars was the bid price that they quoted to put those uh structures in place and do the road and so forth. If the board had a appetite for entertaining that, um I would bring that back in front of you in an official agenda item to award that bid and so forth and put it back in front of you. But if the board was not interested in looking at Pratt's bid, I would want to put it back out as soon as I could, you know, but.
If they'll still honor it, why would you want to go do it again?
One of the things the engineer said, and I agree, is that if they'll honor the price from last year, we're probably better off than going back out.
Yeah, I ain't seen much go down.
Right. So, so all good news. So if if I'm feeling that right, then what I'll do is I'll bring that bid back in front of you guys at the next meeting. Um, VHB and I don't think that we're gonna have an answer um from HUD by then, but we'll cross our fingers, so.
Do you give any idea how long it'll take HUD to make a decision?
No.
Probably quite a while, huh?
Well, well, I I have to give kudos to Senator Collins's office. She was a big part of helping us uh motivate this process again, so. All right, I'll bring them. So that's good news. Uh, going to the town meeting, so there's two things about town meeting and the referendum I want to hit on. One is capital, but the other is the, we had a question on the, for straw poll for people when they were leaving. Would you favor a referendum style town meeting or would you favor an open style town meeting like we do now? Not everybody that voted participated, but a hundred and fifty-four said yes, they would favor a referendum town meeting and a hundred and twenty said that they would favor an open town meeting like we do now. Um, obviously that was a non-binding poll, it's just for discussion, but those are the results from the board or for the board. Um, I don't know if you guys want to have any discussion on that or have that as a future discussion. But I don't think we need to make any decisions right now. If the board did choose to try and go to a referendum style town meeting, we would need to make sure we did that more than ninety days ahead of time and so forth, so.
If you get some support on it, why wouldn't you put it on a ballot now?
Yeah, that's one of the things that we had discussed is maybe voting on that decision in November, is what you're thinking.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
So you're saying a ballot question in November asking if they want to do that in June?
I mean, yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah.
No, I just wanted to make sure you weren't saying that, using this to.
No, no, I mean, it's non-binding. It was, I think everybody knew that. And I'm not sure all the information that they were given was exactly as it would be either, but uh I don't think it's, I mean, I think the people could make a decision on that if it was on a ballot.
You want me to drop a sample question and bring that to you guys to look at?
I'm not overly supportive of it, but I'd be, I'd entertain it, I'm one of five.
Well, I mean.
I would like to see what a referendum ballot for the town budget would look like as well, if you could get an example or two.
Yep, I can, I can bring you guys a sample.
I mean, we had thirty-something articles. I'm assuming it's not listing thirty different articles that they're gonna vote on.
I'm assuming it would.
On a ballot, or is it?
Well, I'm, I would too, I would use the the warrant that for this past town meeting as your template for that and say this is what it would look like. The other thing that needs to be, that people need to understand that they're going into the booth with thirty questions that they have to check yes or no. Um, I would think that it would be good to let them know that they would have to be scheduled public appearance because that's the only way now people will know about, uh be able to ask questions about, about questions. But yes, they they need to know that with this form, they're going into the ballot box and whether there's thirty or fifty questions, they're gonna have to answer yes or no on all of them.
How many, how many people showed up to vote total?
Do you remember when you saw it?
It was close to five hundred.
Okay.
So now everybody filled this out, yeah.
No.
So, a hundred, two hundred and seventy-four people out of five hundred answered that question. Approximately.
But you uh, and we figured we had what, eighty at the town meeting?
Or voters?
I mean.
I found it funny, we had fifty more people supported the town meeting type budget process than were, than were actually here at the town meeting. When they, when they did the straw poll, it was a hundred and twenty. They were for the town meeting, but whether they all showed up to town meeting.
No, I agree with you. I I, I'm gonna tell me the what, but I don't, uh, you know, it's just something that uh I think it looks a lot, if you hit five hundred people voting on something, you know, an article in the town or whatever, that's a lot better representation than eighty. I don't think you can argue that with me.
Nope.
Can you find out how many towns have gone to a referendum vote? Had that, and gone to it and then come back to town meeting?
I can try. I'll put a question on the list server and ask. I know that um the town that I previously worked in, when the pandemic started, they had gone to a referendum town meeting for special circumstances. I think they did that the year after that I came here as well and they have since gone back to an open town meeting. I mean, I don't know what the reasoning was over part of that discussion, but. I I'll see what I can find out.
I'll probably take more questions, but I'll shoot you an email. Here's if they wrote down something in a referendum budget.
What happens? Same thing that would happen if they got voted down at open town meeting.
But ultimately a town meeting has has voted, well, I don't know. You must re-vote, lower the amount or.
Do what?
If they voted down the police budget at town meeting. I don't know if you ever done that. I've never seen it, but anyway, if they did, what 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 happens?
I have to go back for you to vote. Usually your first article on a referendum ballot is, in the event that this budget does not pass, the article would ask for twenty percent of the budget amount to be approved so that the town can operate until.
I don't mean by any, but isn't the school budget, aren't they entitled to what they had last year, as it is now?
Everything goes back to last year's.
Right.
Right.
But with the school, it's outlined in state, state law.
Right. And and the town, it's not. So if you have a provision in your first article that a certain percentage is approved pending the uh budgets being turned down, that way you will have operating funds July for our.
Yeah, I just, I, those are some of the questions that I have. What what happens if, I'm not about to pick on the police department, but wastewater treatment facility or the town office budget, any, any one individual, if it gets voted down, we have to continue to operate. I mean, like you said.
Right, and that's why it allows for a percentage for that. I know because I saw one.
I mean, if we're in a referendum, that means having another referendum vote with a different amount thirty days later, sixty days later, whatever it is.
All right, I'll get that information for you pretty focused for the future. Uh, so the last thing is, the town meeting passed, we, oh, I'm sorry.
Just to make my comment, um Buckfield uses a referendum, went to a few years ago, specifically language in each of our articles, and it says um with a select word, uh recommends and with a budget committee recommends just like here, and then it also says if this doesn't fail, then what happens is revert to like last year's question. Pretty straightforward.
But what we can do is, one, one question answered.
Yep.
In Harrison a couple of years ago, that bid didn't work that way. They had to have an emergency meeting. Three days before June thirtieth. And they've been gone to a meeting ever since. The first year they did it, it worked great, but the second year, everything, a lot of things were voted down.
Good feedback. Um, I'll hit on the capital stuff. So capital was passed at the town meeting. Uh, so as I look at that, I've I've been working with the finance director on cash flow and discussions about that. So I'd like, my recommendation, I'd like to take the board's temperature on this, is the bulk of the capital that was passed, I, you know, I think should, you know, move forward. However, I'd like to see us wait until tax payments start to come in on a couple of the big ticket items. Um, the first tax payments come in on October twenty-fifth. I think some of the unknown, we don't know what's gonna happen with the school budget and how much that appropriation is going to be. Um, this last year, we are, we are trucking right along. I think we are going to hit the two million dollar mark with casino revenue, but we're pretty darn close. And um so just, just thinking about those items. When we look at the um vehicle expenses, we have sixty thousand for a police vehicle and then we have three hundred thousand that was passed for a fire vehicle. My understanding with the fire, even if we place the order today for a vehicle, we're not gonna see it for a year or more, right? Is that kind of a general thought or, no, next week?
Well, yeah, it depends, the more research we've done, it it depends on what we opt to buy. It could be the earliest kind of pristine one, if we placed it, that by next month would be cheaper, but.
So, anything with the, you know, aside from maybe going out to out to bid or something like that, I think that we need to make sure that we don't have, we don't, we're not expending that three hundred thousand dollars before taxes start coming in. That's my point there. Um, the other one is the wastewater treatment facility. We, sixty-one thousand five hundred and fifty, I'd like to also wait until after taxes come in. I feel like that one is as pressing, I guess. And then lastly, the transfer station, the baler, if the baler can hang on until tax payments come in, that would be great. I don't see why we can't put that bad boy out to bid and, you know, or, you know, get, even get some price quotes and stuff, but we could get that process going, but not take delivery until after taxes come in. A lot of these other things, these smaller items, um, and one of the reasons that Ed wanted to come tonight was to talk about those the windows on the recycling building, you know, on the side of the building. I don't see any reason why that, you know, things like that, that we shouldn't just move move ahead with after July one because the funding will be available. But those are the ones I just was concerned about. I just wanted to, just to kind of make sure that we're not putting the cart before the horse. Again, I talked to Sharon over in finance, you know, we're both very comfortable that, you know, we could, we could go a whole hog and do all this July first, but I think we'd just be a little more comfortable if we give ourselves some breathing room and that's all, so.
So if you go out to bid now for any or all of these, by the time the bids come in, probably you're gonna look for bids coming in in about thirty days anyway. By the time the bids come in and then they're awarded, uh and then the delivery on them, you're probably not looking at delivery until at least October first for any or all of them. But uh if you started the bid process now versus October, at least that moves it up and then by October when the tax money comes in, then the money's available to buy whatever we need to buy. You're gonna start the bid process now, aren't you?
I'd like to see on some of these, yes.
Yeah.
I'd like to see us get moving on those, you know, after July one, get everything start cooking. Especially with, especially with some of these things like, like the the bathroom for the recycling building, those and those items there, because I don't know. for the recycling building, those, and those items there, because I don't know, I don't really have a good feel on the workloads of contractors, and if we give them plenty of time, and I don't even know if the bathroom's a winner project for somebody, a winner of a lot.
I know that the guy that I met to bid for the building, the building inside, he called me the other day, want to be ready to start moving, moving it through. He was ready, sat over, that was six thousand, five thousand dollars, build the building.
What was that one for?
That was the, the roof inside the building, out in the building.
Right, yeah.
And we haven't decided if we're gonna have to put in a second tank or we can just put an holding tank. Probably there's a thing out there in the state that says if it's low use, you can put a holding tank here and pop it once a year, which I would think is safer for us to have it go all the way in, like we already get trash.
Well, that, that would make sense, you mentioning that.
I mean, building a while, you know, then they're at least two months out, probably, once you've signed a contract.
And I would think some of these jobs too, you wanna get done in the, in this time of year, rather than waiting until, you know, when it's cold, if they're done before then.
So that is my plan, is to start putting these things after July first, start putting these things out to bid. I was thinking, uh, just kind of slow, slowing on those, those items there. In reference to the fire truck, however, and the three hundred thousand dollars, there was discussion about a mini pumper is one of the primary things that was discussed. I know that the fire department's working on spec sheets and so forth. Is that something that we want to start seeking pricing on, or do you have any thoughts on that sheet, on how that process would work with the mini pumper?
Well, we, we are doing the spec sheets already, so if we do go out to Harnett Beach, we would be ready, um, Mr. Garland had mentioned that we would be talking about it next meeting, so I didn't bring anything with me, um, but.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's okay. So I wanted to get that ready for next meeting, to have everything ready to go out, so we could get it out without the specs, hopefully thirty days, we would receive those back. Um, there's a couple in our research, we've been driving around to Brownfield, so a couple of Casco, a bunch of places that have mini pumpers, to look at them, to look at the different brands and builds, and, um, obviously we've found stuff we like, stuff we haven't. There's some demo trucks on the line right now. Right now, four chassis, which is what this truck would be put on, are tough to come by. So there's two brands, one in particular we're interested in, um, that said they would hold a chassis for us, if we could kind of sit down with them and essentially build the truck, build the spec with them. And that one could be here by January, if we wanted, um, this particular company. So it could be four years, it could be January, it depends with what we go, but we don't have the bottom dollar yet, we haven't met with him. So, I mean, we're, at this point, we're thinking three, seven, probably, for a mini pumper, but it could be as early as January if we want with them. It could be, you know, three years, depending on what we get off line. But I don't have those official numbers.
I put you on the spot.
Sorry.
Okay. So we'll revisit the mini pumpers in the sun at the next meeting, so.
I'd like to ask the board to waive the busy job on the doors. This is the only company that does it, and I don't want to put my other doors in the facility, so I only can work at one company. That was six thousand dollars, I need to take that out. So it's like a thousand over the five thousand dollars.
Or someone.
If we can do that.
I support waiving the bid process to that. Coming up.
I just want to get it done and get the building secured.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, waiving the bid process on that project. This time, hello. All in favor?
I just have a question, follow up on something you said, Ed. You said that the person that is gonna build, the building within the building.
Yep.
Is ready to start?
He's ready.
Is he the one that's getting the bid to do it?
That's the one that did it out.
Oh, okay.
The one that we got, who we wanted a, a rough ass, who went to records and asked what the material was on, and it could mean just, just what he did.
And how much was that?
What was, what did, what buildings, have you got that right there with it?
I've got a recycled bathroom, we had twenty-five thousand.
I think we took the buildings, they committed, it's over all the five thousand dollars to build that.
Right, that was for the whole shebang.
Twenty-five thousand is pretty much what we did in.
So.
The town building, I think it was a little over five thousand dollars to do so.
So if he's available right now, the possibility could be that in a month from now, he may not be available?
Right.
And that would be just five thousand?
It's a little over five thousand.
Yeah, just to do that portion of it. Maybe that would make sense.
That's to put the building inside there, the wall, and then, kind of, two dark walls, building would be done.
Do you wanna do a vote, you finish the vote, is that? I was gonna say that. We've been waiting five years now.
I don't know. You got, you got the budget, I think, I give it to you.
The votes? Yeah.
I think the other thing is he, he has a charge account, you can count it, we could make some, correct, will you? He'll do something like that.
I'd like to make a motion that we could, um, start that now while he's available, at least that portion of that.
It's pretty, pretty good, the builders, we live on, it's ten thousand. Does really good work.
Motion second.
Start the offer now.
Start the back.
All in favor? Vote.
Ed, do you think we're being right about that?
I want me to do electric heat.
Electric heat?
It's all, ten dollars, it's a five by ten room.
Right, I mean, they're buying pumps, or heat pumps, or they haven't someone looked at it. What for the heat pump?
Nothing, I don't think he did it, it was a lot, but, how do you know?
Well, you could always have, um, I mean, whoever's coming to do that incentive estimates for the heat pumps, if there's any other building that could use those, might be a good opportunity to have them also do estimates for wherever, while we are, while they are still having that program.
Right.
Heat pumps?
Yeah.
Do you wanna have, have them look at the whole building?
Do the whole public safety building?
Yeah.
I mean, why not?
Well, in case the rest of that system fails, because I need to come back here a year from now and have the same problem. I think that even if you repair the basic system, because tomorrow we're gonna put some heat pumps in there as well, as a secondary.
Give you back three quarters?
Okay. We can work on that, just just listen. I think that's all I have, sir, for the.
That's all for you?
Yes, sir.
We can, we can, so what can I do? Motion chair and vice chair.
I make a motion that we might point there, the chair. I'd always believed in the past that we move it around, which we did, and we went to the chair, and we became chair, Scott became chair. I just think we should move it around, so, that's my reason.
I'll second it, and I agree that it should change every year.
Motion second, and other discussion. All those in favor?
Well, I didn't vote myself.
I know.
You know? No, I didn't.
Vice chair?
Who's up now?
Who? I don't know, I think I was the vice chair before stop, but I'll do it if nobody wants to do it, I don't care if I do it or not, so. I know you guys are, I know Sharon's really busy. But.
Do you want to share, vice chair?
I prefer not to, because she, she.
You want to, do I want to?
You want it?
I don't care.
Scott, you want it?
I make a motion, Dana would be vice chair.
Okay. Motion second, discussion, all those in favor? Right. Time works. I'm assuming you want to finish this meeting.
Yeah, it's okay.
Sharon, her little elastic hat, you have been considering these. Oh, yes.
Congratulations, Floyd.
Yes.
I know you've been waiting.
Good night.
Have a good night.
You still have a photo of the target?
Couple of signatures.
I'm trying to recollect. What's happening with the smoke these years, town people?
What do you mean with that?
When all the very bodies are still sending you the water, usually by June, and you hear, that wasn't a, a big.
I haven't gathered with her lately, but. They take it so much.
The grass is growing hard.
Some people may lose on, on the state book. Whatever they ask.
You mean when the, the fair is on or what?
Yeah, mine was there last week, it's over in the small piece, but.
I don't know.
My wife was saying that made me laugh.
Somewhere else.
You guys thought it was not my decision?
Yep. And those of you in us? We wanted to send the whole folder out.
Visa, you have a visa? Not me.
We had this discussion in the public safety building the other day.
Can, well, I'm just picking all, I didn't, I didn't. So one is, um, these top two just need to be signed by the individuals.
Person that says?
Yep, yep.
That year really got real soft. Star with it, should've done one. And then Boyd, he's just passed that before.
Scott, could you sign the laws? That's where you win.
You do swear? I've never had a woman do that before to me.
I don't, that's right.
Ed, you look surprised at that statement.
Oh, yeah? Just, you know, I started doing friendly, operated, you know, my head off. You always do that. I don't know why you don't have enough money, but you're already.
Monday's busy.
Well, because, Monday's what you're gonna do, last, not for now, no.
He's not, he's not totally recuperating from the weekend.
Oh, that's what, so, so. So, my problem is I'm in very long, so.
Whatever.
The thing that we need to discuss, and even if you're standing, you need to.
We're already in the middle of this tonight.
Full touch, please.
Okay, so, you know.
Thank you, sir.
I want the, this is, I'm, I'm.
She's staying right up there now.
She ran in the van, maybe up there for four weeks. She's with even P bar.
Oh, is that who she's?
She's only gonna walk if they, they're gonna bring her. That's good, I have a little.
Oh, wow.
Start to fall off, so. She's got four weeks there, and then, and then I'll offer a permanent job.
Yeah.
She's only got two, two more to last, if she can.
Then you can retire, she's gonna support you.
Well, that's, that's, that's.
Sounds like a deal, honestly.
I still got a few more years. But she, she ends up with a bad guy job, she's gonna have to work at the, well, somebody to be doing.
Yeah. By the way.
I like the travel, like, they do really fine, so.
Don't they, don't they have, you have an office in Augusta, don't they?
Yeah, but, I got still open, but if she does work, it's.
Up there.
What's she doing for work?
Right now, it's for this, that, the physical.
The physical, yeah.
But she don't really like that, that, she's doing the only way in class, and.
All of us.
I'm like.
I, well, I just thought of something, uh, when I was, I had to stop by the post office and, uh, are we responsible for the F P for that library?
No, it's not a town building.
It's not a town department, no, we are not. Well, it's falling down, and nobody's looking, stopper looking.
Wonder.
We don't own that.
What's, what's falling down on that?
Though, although, I wouldn't say the cells around the windows and everything, I just, I don't even know. I mean, if I hadn't had it up there, I wouldn't even know.
So we're not to be to be paid, then, or not?
We're not responsible for the building.
Town, town always most of all, but I don't think.
Pretty much.
Well, I'm just wondering, we were gonna get that built.
Because when they came, they brought it, that's when we said, we don't pay them, so we're gonna.
No profit.
Yeah.
I'm on that, I'm on that board. Oh, but it, it, we had to meet, you know, night, we had the fundraiser, but this one I have to bid, if you change it, and, I don't know, we're absolutely gonna do, I mean, you know, we're gonna probably just move lighting in the whole place, everybody, you know, every color.
Did it really, you know, and we tell them.
Calender efficiency main, to safely qualify for that incentive program.
Then you know, all the lights, the electrician, he done all of it, the transfer station, I mean, excellent, he done everything, and, and we have to check that, so.
Yeah.
Say like six thousand dollars for the lights in the, in second building.
Did you go through that efficiency main program?
Yeah, we were checking, like, six grand back.
Yeah, that's what we told you.
Ten thousand, ten thousand seven hundred dollars for all lights, and then six thousand back, so it was only a four grand.
Well, this efficiency main, put the heat pumps in our wreck building.
Yes, it was.
And the lights.
When I was in Freiburg, we did every single building through efficiency main. It cost the town about a quarter, and, um, and we got about three quarters rebate back from them, that incentive program. It really is worth it. I'm contacting right now for L E D lights and heat pumps through efficiency main. And actually, they do all the work, there's not a lot of work that is, that we have to do.
They just send you one paper to sign it, it's.
That's, uh, we just signed.
They do it all, they, they all will pay for it, really.
Yeah.
Electrician, is it a price?
Yes.
And then I'll just find one paper, so you go ahead, and you agree with them.
He was super helpful.
Vacation's been exhausting.
I need a good job.
Vacation's been exhausting.
Wait, on vacation? Don't you wait? You've been on vacation for what, three weeks?
Yeah.
What's the name of the road?
A little bit of plumbing.
Did you say your joke today?
Every time you, every time you talk to your wife.
Word.
Your poncho.
I was definitely.
Oh, yesterday.
Yeah, it was, two hundred and eighty-eight. Went to the license, I went for a board a long ago.
But she knows the word, I'll see.
Well, well, come off about.
She goes, oh, we found out, we drove, yes.
Oh, nice of you.
I think she's in very long.
Ed, turn the page, I have to sign on that, Scott.
Oh.
Yeah, when they're done, I'll do them.
What do you got, I'm trying to handle, what's time?
Now we can talk about those.
I'm young.
It's not, right, it's, we're, we're.
I'm going to check.
No, I don't.
No, no.
Have a good night, guys.
Do you say that, or that?
No.
So which did you wish for?
What? Um, whites.
Whites, yeah.
Whites, yeah.
They do what they do to Carol today.
Yeah, one, four.
That's why we're gonna, what's, I thought it was.
Um, yeah, the other, um, yes, yeah. Well, I know they're pulled down, they're careless.
Checking so.
Keeps track of all of us people. Town clerk's a light guy.
She wants to.
You got to, you really.
Motion warrants. Free motion, assign one on one, three, eight.
Sorry.
All those in favor? Go. Secure session. Let's go to the executive session, we discussed personal medical search M R S A Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section Four Oh Five, Six A. Second, I'll second. All those in favor?
I'll get the back over when you, if you don't mind getting.
Three quarter.
So you got it on Carol?
Yes, they delivered it today.